Board as well as Mike Fortman, who's our associate publisher. So they will watch the rewatch this. And we may put it on our website as well for citizens who are interested in watching it. But we'll get started then. So if you want to just begin, I appreciate you sending over some of, some of your thoughts in advance, but we'd like to just kind of hear one, you've got one term in what you think, how it's been going for you and kind of what you know now, I guess that you didn't know before you got onto school board service and what makes you want to re-up for another term?
Sure. Really first, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this afternoon. We're very fortunate to live in a community where our local newspaper values education enough to bother with this kind of an election and to really work to keep the citizens informed. So thank you. It's a privilege to be with you. My, you know, I started my life in Dubuque Committee School District a long time ago, and I was with the district throughout my entire adult career. And during that time, really had the opportunity to to serve kids in a wide variety of capacities. I was, I started, of course, as a teacher and then was a reading clinician, which means that I, I worked to help teachers who were teaching young children to read. Then I was an elementary principal for a number of years, and then I was in charge of adult learning and school improvement, then ended my career the last few years as Director of Elementary Education. So I've been at this a long time and now have had the last four years the privilege of serving as a member of the Dubuque Committee School District. And that has been an interesting way of taking that same world of education that I worked in for 47 years and then sort of looking at it from a different point of view. And so it has been a good learning experience now after all those years in the district. To take a look at things more maybe from a community perspective, certainly hearing lots of input and feedback from the community, from parents, grandparents, agencies and organizations and community, you know, community-based everything. And so it really, I think for me, I certainly have demonstrated a lifelong commitment to kids and their learning and this community and in service to its kids and their learning and families and staff. I've also, I currently, and actually for the, for the last four years also, I've served on the Keystone Area Education Agency Board of Education, Board of Directors, actually, which Keystone, the state of Iowa is divided into six geographic zones. And ours is called Keystone Area Education Agency, and it serves the northeastern portion of Iowa. So it's been interesting because I've learned during that time, which has been simultaneous with my work on the Dubuque Schools Board, more really about small districts. You know, Dubuque is the largest district in the AEA. We represent about a third of the students who are served by the AEA. And so it's been very interesting for me to see the similarities and the differences between a large district, an urban district that ours is, 10,000 kids, 2,000 staff, and to experience smaller districts and what their, what their needs are, how, how education presents itself in those smaller communities. So that's been a learning experience for me during the same time that I've served on the Dubuque Schools Board of Education. It's certainly been a ride, hasn't it? I mean, the, the world that we're living in now societally, as certainly as well as educationally, has had quite a time. I mean, who, who could have seen the pandemic coming on top of the usual issues and challenges that present themselves in working to help kids learn and grow and become productive citizens? And so it's been, I think, an interesting view into all of it through the lens of an upside down, topsy-turvy, wavy mirror kind of time. And to see a staff that's still committed to doing as absolutely right as we possibly can happen with and for kids, and yet to have the unpredictability of being in school. Who would, you know, who would ever think that in education, you'd wonder if children would be able to be in person for learning? You know, we've always talked about, well, what about online learning and what are the pros and what are the cons? But here we are suddenly tossed into the midst of in-school, out-of-school, you know, in and out and in and out. And so I have, I have a heart for families and all that they must have gone through, through this time, their own issues of work and life and stability and all of that in the midst of maybe having one or two or three or four, however many kids at home for a portion of it. They didn't expect that to happen. So one of the things I've learned during this time is how resilient our staff and our district has been and how much our community values education. I knew that already. I knew both of those already, but I've seen such living example of how very much this community values education and how willing it is to try to roll with all of that unexpected comings and goings of life as it's presented itself during the pandemic. So I think I'm pretty uniquely qualified to continue to serve on the board. I've, I've certainly served the community as an educator for 47 years, now four years on the district board and on the Keystone Board. My, I think my, you asked Amy, what, what did I learn? I think I learned even more the value of what a public school system has as value, what it makes as contribution, and how quickly life can become different in terms of where things are at any given moment. This community has demanded a voice in education, and I think that's excellent. Whether we agree or disagree with what's being said or how it's, how it's been said, I value the hundreds of emails and the personal contacts that have been made. And it's given me, I think, a new insight into maybe how divergent our community is in terms of its perspectives. But through it all, it cares about its kids and it cares about education for its kids. So I'm, I'm a strong advocate for public education. And I'm a strong advocate and practicer of collaboration within the district and collaboration between the district and this community. And I don't think we can ever stop exploring those, those underpinnings, if you will, of what education is, is based on. And I think my, my years of experience and my, I'm a steady person. I'm, I'm pretty unflappable. Not that, not I can't be flapped, but I, I am just pretty, pretty steady. I've, I've experienced a lot educationally. And so I understand the importance of a strong basic education, but it can't stop there. It has to go well beyond, very well, far beyond a basic education. And to include things that are going to help our kids really be functional, productive and happy in the world in which they're going to reside, which is a different world than what we have now even. So I think I have a better view into that as now. And maybe the pandemic, for all of its challenges and unfortunate things, has caused us to really step back and say what matters and what doesn't. And I think what matters, what mattered before still matters. But I think there are some things that we've, we've come to find out matter that we maybe didn't have as right in our, our area, our area of focus that we do now. I'll give you an example. Career and technical education as the, as the workforce shifts and life becomes different and whatever is going to result from this pandemic time. We know that the, the shortage of workers is clear and present. So what does that mean? It means that we need more opportunities for kids to explore the world of work, to explore the, what, what the landscape of jobs and work looks like and will look like as they move out of high school and move into their adult life. Whether they go to college or they go to technical school or they go nowhere. We have to prepare them for having a view into that. And so the work that Mark Burns and his team have been doing with exploring with our colleges and universities to create new career pathways and new ways to have more opportunities than maybe we've, we've presented to our high school kids before. All kinds of exciting things are happening now. And I spent most of my life and most of my career in elementary education. So one of the things I've learned as a member of the school board is also much more about secondary education and what it, what it must be and what it, what it is, what it needs to be, and what are the ways we can get there? The, the opportunities now that we're adding for internships in, in area business and industries to me is extremely exciting. Let's get our kids out there. Let's give them some credit for some on-the-job kinds of experiences that will help them not only view the world more broadly, but will help them function within it when they're finished with school, however many years that is, and however many levels or degrees they might choose to get. So those have been some new learnings for me, and that's, that's been fun. I think that we're just at the starting point of exploring more collaborations and programming possibilities with our colleges, universities and our businesses and industries and agencies in the community and around the community. And I, it will be very exciting to see where that all goes. I, I just look forward to, to being a part of that and to supporting it and encouraging it and, and working to, to keep looking for more and more ways.
And as you look back over these, over the last four years and perhaps the last, the last year and a half in particular, but, but throughout your, your tenure on the school board, what, what issues, what votes maybe were, were the most, most difficult for you to decide personally? And is there anything that you look back on that you feel like the board didn't get right or could have, could have done a better job addressing?
Yes. Probably one of the greatest sadnesses of my, my life on the board was as a, it was early in my, my starting time on the board when the board did not support the continuance of the Prescott Charter School. That was not a hard vote for me. I knew I had worked as a part of that group of supporters from the district throughout the development of it and the, the refinement and sophistication of it. It was doing right things and it was doing things that were only possible so long as the charter school status was able to be supported and maintained. The board by a narrow margin did not support it. And I think that is one of the most disappointing things that I've been a part of as a member of the board. It just, I believe it was wrong. And I believe that it was poorly understood perhaps. But clearly, when we talk about innovation and active engagement of kids in learning and real-world application of learning and all the things that that program had in place, successfully moving forward with, suddenly it was gone. It was gone because the Board of Education did not support it. And so that to me is a great sadness. No difficult vote for me to vote to continue the charter, but it, it failed. And so expeditionary learning is not even present at any substantial level, as I understand it, at Prescott anymore. And that's, that's a huge loss, gigantic loss. Mostly the board works, I think, extremely well together, the current board. But we have, we have differences of priorities. We have some differences of values. We have some, I think, healthy differences. It's probably no great shock to tell you that I think the, the most difficult to work through has been the mask mandate. I mean, we're not finished with that yet. It's sort of a no-brainer to say, oh, my gosh, could that have become more of a lightning bolt of community, I'll say disagreement. I don't know that it's disagreement as much as it is a vast continuum of perspectives on what's real, what's not, what's, what's valued, what's not, what's an infringement, what's not, what's too much, what's too little. And again, in the, in the, in appreciation of the community, people have been in contact with the board and they have let us know what they think about it. It's just that on this issue, as with so many in our society today, it's, it's a pretty polarized point of view. And so the board has struggled in its differences on that issue to reach a point where we could agree to what, what does the science say? What does our, what do our legal experts say? What does our data say or not say? What are, what's our role? What's our responsibility relative to safety and well-being of our staff and students? And so I've made it very clear, you know, that I'm in support of doing everything we can to keep everybody as safe as we possibly can. And so those who support masking have been very generous in affirming that position. But we've also had certainly, as you would expect, much communication from those who strongly oppose that. So for me, the, where I am with it is not difficult to be. I believe it's our responsibility. I believe the science and the legal experts are such that they, they've made it pretty clear what I think we need to do or what they believe we need to do. The difference lies in how we view those opinions and that, that science and that advice from our folks. A pivotal point in that has been the data. You know, many on the board would say the data doesn't support masking. Well, I've made it very clear that, in my opinion, the data is so inadequate in terms of the system that we're allowed to create to really monitor the, what's going on in our schools. We don't know. We, we can put numbers up on the dashboard, and we do. And with all earnest and right intention to create, to create accurate data. However, we don't have a required testing program. We don't have a required reporting program. And we don't have a required tracing program that give us an assurance of anything close to what I believe would represent accurate data. So for me-
Some of those things will come to pass, like an increase in testing in the schools or, or contact tracing, those kinds of things?
So far, it's not looking like it's either going to be allowed or funded. And so until those, at least those two factors change at the state level, I would say no. It is what it is. So to me then, how do you use something you call data? I've, I mean, I have a master's degree plus 45 hours. I've done a lot of work studying research prototypes and methods and, and working with data, gathering data, analyzing data. Good grief, how, how could you possibly look at that and say, oh, there we have usable data? No, we do not. We have the best data we can put together, given what we're allowed to do. So I'm not, Amy, I'm not optimistic that, that that's going to change. What I'm hopeful is that more and more people continue to get vaccinated and continue to do the things they can to protect. Certainly, our district has gone beyond the extra mile to try to, to do the things, short of masking, that prevent the spread of the virus. I just think we need to do everything we can.
Okay, thanks.
Been here, Nancy, lots of, lots of areas that has been discussed, or one of the issues that's been discussed a lot recently is just kind of the future of facilities in the district. There's been, you know, some evaluations, assessments that have looked at, you know, per potential cost savings, if maybe some schools would, would be combined. At the same time, there's been some discussion, early discussion about the idea of, you know, planning down the road for maybe another school out towards the southwest arterial as the city starts growing out that direction. Just kind of curious, what your assessment is of the state of the district's facilities now and kind of where we go from here?
I'm really pleased with our 10-year facilities plan. It's review, it's, it's, looks out 10 years. Along with it, it looks at availability of a predictable funding throughout that 10-year period. And it's rooted in fiscal responsibility that takes us as far into improvements in our schools as we can, given the funding that we have. So I, I value that our district does that kind of planning. I appreciate that it's reviewed and modified annually. And to me, the, you asked specifically, Dustin, about a couple of things. I'll comment on both of them. In the area, this links to, in almost, not even a dotted line. It's a direct line between fiscal responsibility, the things that have to happen if we get into a budget reduction situation, as we have many times. Iowa has dropped to 31st in the nation in funding to public education, and that was in 2020. I have not seen, and I can't find the data for 2021, but I know for 2020, we were 31st in the nation in funding to education. So with that carries all kinds of things related to facilities, to adequacy of the budget to meet the needs of educational programming, and staffing, which then links it to shortages of staff. I mean, there are so many linkages that go out from that facilities issue, but I'll address your specific question, Dustin. When we look at, at our district geographically, and we look at the boundaries of our, our schools and the geographic boundaries, areas that we serve in each of those boundaries, and you look at the presence now of the southwest arterial, now that it's been completed, what you find is no presence of an elementary school in the southwest arterial area. So if you live, or if a person lives along the boundary, the Dubuque Committee School District boundary that's adjacent and contiguous to the western Dubuque boundary, what you'll find is if you look out from your home in wherever along that line, you'll see the physical presence of schools in the western Dubuque district. And western Dubuque is a terrific district. We, we are, they have, we have a wonderful neighbor with educational programming there. So with no disregard whatsoever to that. But we're seeing those who live within the Dubuque Committee School District and don't look out their window and see the presence of a, a school really anywhere close to the southwest arterial zone, most of it. What do they do? Too many of them are choosing to go to western Dubuque. So a very large portion of potential for us to have a budget based on a larger student population is reduced by the number who choose in the absence of seeing school presence in their area. They choose to go where they do see it, and that's western Dubuque. So I believe that for that reason, we need to develop or create, build a new elementary school in the southwest arterial area. When I was principal at Table Mound, there was a section that now is really the, the largest part of, of the, the area along the southwest arterial. It really wasn't close to anything, and it still isn't. It wasn't close to Table Mound, though we, we pulled in many of those students from that area. Then that was rezoned as Table Mound continued to grow and we needed more space. And so that meant that those students were bused to Eisenhower. Then they were bused to Hoover. Then they were bused to Kennedy or Carver. But none of those seem like a neighborhood school kind of situation. So going back to your original question, I believe that we do need to build that. We need to have a visible presence of an elementary school in, along the southwest arterial in that geographic area that has forever not been geographically close to any elementary school and stop the loss of some of our students that we're losing every year. Secondly, fiscally, the, the, the facility 10-year plan is very carefully planned in relationship to the known funding that will be received by the district. If we can say anything is really known, but it, it's, as far as we know, it's, it's just a given. And so in the process of that, because funding to education in Iowa has dropped to 31st in the nation, is not adequate for us to keep our educators' salaries where they ought to be. That's part of the teacher shortage situation locally. That doesn't explain the national one. It's just that funding to education in general, public education in general, is not keeping pace with what it takes to educate our kids. So back to your question about the efficiencies of reconfiguring elementary and middle schools. Why would we do that? When the superintendent, Mr. Ryan Gans, brought us to the board a recommendation to look at the fiscal savings that could come from some reconfigurations, it was pretty amazing. He brought us a look, as, as you're, well, we're well aware of, I'm sure, to look at, let's start with middle schools. If we look at one Rose, Eleanor Roosevelt-sized middle school compared to the sum of Jefferson and Washington Middle Schools, which are almost exactly the same size as one Roosevelt, the cost difference to operate the two smaller middle schools compared to the one larger Roosevelt is $3.8 million per year. $3.8 million is a huge amount with no other factors being considered other than going from two schools to one. And the facility costs of operating that, the staffing costs of operating it, that's a huge cost savings. I believe we should pay strong attention to that and really study that much more. Secondly, and a part of that same information that the superintendent brought to us is at the elementary level. If you take a two-section elementary school compared to operationally, compared to the cost of running a four-section elementary school, you say, oh, two, two sections equal one four-section. And they do. However, the cost is $1 million more to operate the two, two sections than one four-section. Now again, we better pay attention to that. We need to be looking at those kinds of efficiencies. My entire career, I worked to keep class sizes at a place where we know they are significantly beneficial to children and their learning because they're beneficial to teachers and their teaching. Most of our urban education counterparts have increased their class sizes to a very frightening level, from my point of view. 31st graders, which as I understand it is not unusual in many urban areas today, is unconscionable to me from a teaching and learning point of view. So instead of looking forward to cost savings related to increasing class sizes or cutting programs that we know that our children benefit from and need to continue, why wouldn't we look at facility cost savings by reconfiguring the number of elementaries, the number of middle schools, and to reap the benefits of those efficiencies along the way? So did that answer your question, Dustin? In a very long-winded way, I'm sure. Sorry about that. It just all ties together, you know? It's, it's hard to separate budget from class size, from facilities, from zoning, you know, issues and, and all of that. So the answer I, I've given you, I believe, is yes. I believe we need to pursue each of those potentials for cost savings, at least at, at a rate where we not just study it in terms of, oh, let's spend the next few years studying it, but let's really look at this and explore the possibility of, of benefiting- but let's really look at this and explore the possibility of of benefiting programming and benefit benefiting staffing by saving interior facilities.
Something that that Nancy that we've been hearing a lot about is air conditioning in the schools and getting that up to speed in in some of these buildings that maybe don't have it at all or in certain areas. Is that something that's a priority for you, or do you see that being tied into this reconfiguring plan?
I do, I I see it as a priority. I don't know if I would say it's among my top priorities, but I see it as a priority. But it for for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think we've reached a tipping point with the number of or the volume of our instructional space that is already air-conditioned. I believe it to be about sixty percent of our instructional areas that have already been air-conditioned through the process of adding onto buildings, remodeling buildings, upgrading buildings. So we have a great number of geothermal systems, which is such a highly efficient way to go about air conditioning. What we're left with is the buildings that are not easily air-conditioned. If you look at our WPA built buildings, um which they're beautiful, they're built like the Rock of Gibraltar, um but they're not easily air-conditioned. And you can look at Bryant Fulton, Lincoln Marshall, those four WP Fulton, those those WPA buildings are tough to air-condition. However, senior high school is a very good example that it is possible. As we as we now start in this phase two of the renovation of of Dubuque Senior High School, that building will end up fully air-conditioned. That's a huge amount of instructional space, not easily air-conditioned. It's also, I mean, look at the structure of the building, it's, you know, they don't call it the castle for no reason. It's it is, it is a beautiful building, it's beautifully built and not easily air-conditioned. But we will end up with that space fully air-conditioned. And so as we look across the district, if sixty percent of your students are represented by air-conditioned classroom spaces and you live in Iowa, and therefore you have started the year, end of the year predictably as um disrupted by intense heat, and you're on the third floor of one of those WPA buildings, no learning happens. Past a certain point, I can tell you, I I taught in one of those, and I've I've worked with all of the all of the schools in the district. It is not a good learning environment. So to the extent that we can make it a priority, and it is, it's on the tenure facility plan as something for us to pursue. But I think we've reached the point where why do we dismiss um classes because of intense heat once sixty percent of our kids about are leaving air-conditioned space? That no longer continues to make sense. And children who um we can't legally dismiss some schools, not others. And so if the heat doesn't make it possible for some children to stay in school, everybody goes home. So I think we're at a point where we just need to to make that happen.
As as you put this field of candidates, so many people running for school board this time around, which uh i- is great to see the interest. But how do you, how would you differentiate yourself uh to voters that that maybe are 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 having a difficult time discerning? And what what qualities do you think, or or what are some key things that you think uh voters should be looking for in their in their school board uh uh members? And I mean, not just for yourself, but you know, you've got to vote for, you've got to pick somebody uh new as well.
Right. I I think when it's a time where we must have Board of Education members who are who understand at some level how the district operates and how education happens. In order to make most right decisions, I think we have to have a sense of how does learning happen? What are the things we need to be prioritizing for teaching and learning? What are the ways we can have it all make sense for our kids? So that their level of motivation, no matter how motivated innately or motive motivated environmentally they are, that they can connect with the the focus of the learning and they can um be actively engaged in it. So that takes a level of understanding. For me, you know, obviously forty seven years of working as an educator in the district and much of that in leadership and now experienced board member, I I think I bring a a background that's uncommon. I wouldn't expect anybody else to arrive with that that level of preparation in terms of training and insights and understandings and experiences, but I do. So I think that has substantial value. I think it makes me kind of uniquely qualified. But I think in all of our board members, we have to have folks who are looking at we have to be in charge of the greater good. And this is a time in our society, I think, when greater good, to some extent, not certainly not unilaterally, but to some extent, the greater good has been replaced by me and my wishes, interests, um expectations, whatever. And so I think as a board member, we can't lose sight of what are we about? Who are we? What is our role? Our role is policy, our role is working with the superintendent in an employment way, in an evaluation way. But it's also about assuring that the laws are followed, the greater good is accomplished, and quality programming reigns supreme, if you will. So that means highly effective teaching, strong learning outcomes. And that takes s- an understanding of education that may be more than I once went to school. And so I think candidate, as I as I'm getting to know the other candidates, whom most, many of whom I did not know, I'm I'm finding ways that I I'm I'm finding many, many things of value that I look at as I think, who am I going to vote for? I think that there are people who are very committed to children and their learning, committed to supporting the families at a time that our society has has struggled more mightily than in my lifetime, I think. And I think that we have to have uh board members who are interested in teaching and learning but are also interested in general health, general well-being. Brain health is has replaced the term mental health, but it's also becoming almost an overworked, what does it really mean? What are we after with that? To me, it's about working with the whole child and being concerned about the health and safety and uh preparation of each of those students for a life where they are a healthy um a healthy being going out. We need folks, we need folks on the board who want to create lifelong learners. And that's just not a pers- that is a perspective, but it also calls for the board to support programs and tools and opportunities for our students that go beyond uh what we might have once thought we needed to be about. So I'm looking for a focus on strong teaching, strong student outcomes, general well-being. I want to create kids who are who are innovators and creators, who go off into the work work workforce with the technical skills to work where technology is going to be part of their job, whatever their job is. How well are we are we equipping our kids for that world? In other words, how does the board support expenditure of funds for technology? How well did we support professional learning and integration of technology into the teaching and learning process? How well does the board understand the fiscal responsibilities of a district with a budget of this size? I worked a whole lot of my career with millions and millions of dollars of budget that I was responsible for. And again, not everybody needs to come in with that, but they need to have a sense of what the fiscal responsibility that the Board of Education brings into each of its decisions, what does that look like? And how does greater emphasis here detract from emphasis there? So that takes an understanding of the educational process that is um at a certain level that um really supports a well-balanced operational system. We're in the business of the system. And not operationally, we need to stay out of the operational life of the district. But we need to stay in the over overall organizational institutional health healthiness in terms of its operation as a district. And that takes a perspective, I think, that is broad, um that is best served by having experiences operating at a systems level. And again, I certainly bring that, and my my point is not to promote me, but to say, as your question directs it, Amy, what do we need in a in a board member? I think we need that sense of system and that sense of um I, when I was teaching s- school improvement to to the schools years ago, I used to talk about um the school, the dis- the um education is like a system. It's it's like Jell-O. If you touch it here, it wiggles over there. And so the board has to have that perspective as well. Yes, we might be passionate about having the very best baseball fields in the in the universe, and I'm not opposed to upgrading our baseball fields. But if we do that, what else are we not able to do? That might have greater uh implication and um impact on our kids and their learning outcomes. So I think the board has to be able to keep that broad view, has to be willing to um deal with a community that's at a point of heightened anxiety right now and be able to navigate all of that um. What's the word? Navigate all of that with finesse and with um a sense of balance and a sense of understanding of the big picture, as well as the microcosm or the microscopic point being made by any single person or any single group. We have to always keep the big picture in mind, whether it's the picture of the system or the picture of the school or the picture of the classroom or the teacher. Those all have to have a broad perspective, I think, that the board stays out of the microcosm but stays in the balance of a big picture.
Well, we're closing on the end of our allotted time, but um I did wanna, you know, just give you maybe a couple minutes to talk a little bit more perhaps about brain health initiatives within the district. Um and I I I might throw in there too, um we've heard, we've heard some some candidates talk a good deal about poverty and and others say maybe that's not the purview of the school dis- school board. Um so it I guess if you could give me a quick response on that as well.
On the issue of brain health and the issues of poverty?
Mm-hmm, right.
Yep, our our schools are mightily affected um by certainly both of those. We have um I in our society, I think we don't, we are learning more about the impact of poverty and all the um the issues of transcency and the issues of um brain health that can go with that, the challenges of life in general through the lens of poverty. And I appreciate that the city has now created a position that's looking to address the issues of poverty. Anderson Sancy is now occupying that role. And I think that's that's a reminder to us that we had better be about understanding poverty and understanding the impact, in this case, of how it affects children and their learning, how it affects families and their intersection with the school and with life. What does a school need to do and be able to know and be able to do to help families who are in poverty? How much poverty can a school um experience? Is ninety-five percent poverty too much? Yes, I think it is. Well, okay, well then what, how would we deal with that? I think we have to wrestle that one in the foreseeable future. But poverty and I don't mean to link poverty and brain health as the same, there certainly not, though I believe there's some inner intersection there. But our classrooms are increasingly affected by brain health issues. Brain health of the adults in the organization, brain health of the children in the organization. And as our students and our staff members both struggle with this time and struggle with the the um the issues that are in front of them, the transcency, the poverty, the the um the lack of experiences, the lack of stability, all of that is mirrored in our classrooms. And so our classrooms are challenged even more than I believe, more than I believe they've ever been. So how can we as a district create more and more opportunities to have healthy children, healthy adults? What programming can we continue? We certainly have many programs in place that address that. Is it enough? I believe not. And I believe that whether it's the children or it's the adults in the organization, we'll have to work more with our community, with our agents, with the community agencies, our community potential for community partners to increase the the interventions for brain health, the um programs and the opportunities for concerns with brains' health to be mitigated, to be helped and um improved. Learning depends on it, and effective teaching population and support staff population depends on it as well. This pandemic has stretched everybody too close to the edge. And I think that even before the pandemic caused greater concern, life in general was taking us in a direction where we needed to have more programs, more support, more interventions, more corrective actions, more preventative things in place. Brain health is a reality, and it's not going away. If anything, we're seeing it, I believe, increasing as a point of concern. So also with poverty, we're seeing our community have a greater and greater experience of poverty. And the children of poverty are missing experiences that help with their learning, that underpin learning. And they're giving us an opportunity for us to really look at how can we better serve children who are living in in poverty? And how can we help our staff to more and more understand it and have at their disposal the things they need? Every day, they are going to be dealing with with children and families who have brain health and or poverty issues, impeding the potential of that child's learning. Well, that means we've got to, we've got to get better at at dealing with it. And that's going to take partnerships within the community that the district participates in, and in fact, perhaps leads.
Well, I appreciate that. I didn't mean to uh paint you into a corner by linking those two issues. I just think they they've just both come up a lot. And uh for someone with your experience in the in the district, um I I as you noted, you know, certainly more now than ever before. So I I just wanted to be sure we hit on both of those things before we ran out of time.
You got it. I think I think, Amy, the the issue is is growth mindset. When you look at excellence in education, I think it really means that as school board members, as school district employees, as parents, as community, this is no time to 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 bring our horse blinders in. We have to be pushing back, opening up the world of possibility for programming improvements, funding improvements, uh operational improvements and efficiencies. And I I believe we're there. To me, that one of the exciting things is, as I watch us as an organization operate, I see that openness, I see that willingness and that desire to grow and improve and make our programming, make our our products and our outcomes stronger and better. So the number of things that are in discussion right now, look at the strategic plan. I mean, the things that are in in motion right now, there are some very exciting um things on the horizon for our district that's going to make it better for everybody. That's fun to be a part of.
Well, we really appreciate your time today, Nancy, uh and sharing your thoughts with us. Um appreciate your service on the school board, and we wish you luck in the in the rest of the days ahead.
Thank you so much. And and again, I want to thank each of you and those who will watch later for this opportunity to to come together and talk about it. And and your your being in your your position uniquely to help the community know more about the candidates. And thank you for all of your efforts to do that. It's it's very important, and thank you.
Thanks.
Stay safe and well.
All right.
Nice to meet you, Dustin and Genevieve. Take care.